Good evening SBCUSD family and welcome to our virtual town hall meeting. I'm Rachel Monáres, Assistant Superintendent of Continuous Improvement, and we were very thankful that you are here tonight with us. Before we get started, we do want to explain interpretation and how that will work for this evening. And so if we could turn, go to the next slide. Did we get to the next slide? There we go. Back one. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for joining us. I'm going to switch over to Spanish just to explain interpretation to our Spanish speaking participants. Buenas tardes, muchas gracias por estar con nosotros hoy. Solamente le quiero dar las instrucciones para meterse a la interpretación de español que tenemos para ustedes. Por favor, haga click en el mundo localizado en la parte de abajo de su pantalla. Escoge su idioma que va a ser Spanish para español y luego seleccione mute original audio para que no se oiga las dos idiomas. Estas instrucciones también las vamos a poner en el chat para si necesita más ayuda y también por favor nos avisa si necesita ayuda. Muchas gracias.
Well, thank you for that interpretation and again, we'll have that in the chat for those who need it. So, 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 once again, thank you for being a part of our virtual town hall. We will spend a very short amount of time at the beginning of this present, of this time with you, just sharing information that is based off of the questions that we've received previously from those of you who were able to give us those questions and in conversations that we've had with various family members, principals, all of that different way that we've gathered information. While we are presenting, please feel free to put questions also into the chat. We have individuals that will be monitoring the chat and we will do our best to answer those questions in the chat as well as the questions that we'll have following. So two ways that you can have your questions answered. You can put questions into the chat as we are presenting and again, someone will be monitoring the chat and we will respond via chat. And/or you can wait until the end of the presentation and we will have plenty of time to answer your questions. It is our intent to answer all of your questions so that you can make an informed choice for your children. And so we will stay in this meeting as long as we need to in order to be able to answer your questions. Keep in mind, we do have over 450 people who have registered to be participants. And so we have to be sure that we are giving lots of different individuals opportunity to ask their questions. But two different ways we can get your questions answered. You can use the chat or you can listen during our presentation and then ask questions at the end. And once again, we did do our best to include any questions that we received before the presentation in our presentation. So hopefully we'll be able to answer a lot of your questions. With that, I would like to introduce our interim superintendent, Dr. Harold Volkmer. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Monárez. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Before I make a couple of comments, I want to acknowledge that I believe we do have a couple of board members in the audience this evening. Dr. Scott Wyatt, our board vice president, I believe is with us. And I know that our board president was planning to be here. I don't know if she was able to come. But she's, I see her, I see her in her Brady Bunch box right there. So I'm going to turn it over for a few comments from our board president, Gwen Rogers. Gwen?
Thank you so much. Yes, I am in the Brady Bunch chat. I just wanted to first say thank you to the staff for putting this together. We know a lot of effort goes into doing this and it's all for our community, it's for our parents. And there will be a lot of learning tonight and a lot of input that we're looking to hear from the community. So I want to thank the parents and thank those that took the time to log in tonight. Just sit back and give us all the information so we can be better at what we are doing. And we thank you so much for tuning in tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you, President Rogers. Appreciate you being here as always. And for those of you who are online with us this evening, we just want to thank you very much for investing your time in this process with us. This evening, I'm going to go over our intended outcomes for this town hall meeting. Number one is to, as Dr. Monárez stated a little bit earlier, we want to share some critical information for parents related to distance learning and the preferred learning model. We are asking you to make a big decision. We understand that. And it's, it's kind of, kind of difficult in a way in that you, you are asking us for information before you make the decision. In some cases, we can't make the decision until we have the information from you. So it's kind of a circular type of arrangement, but we're going to do our best to keep communicating. And then the second part of our outcomes is an opportunity for district staff. And we have a number of district staff on, on the, on the presentation tonight to answer questions in order for families to be able to make a preferred learning model selection. We know that as we, as we prepare for a return to in-person instruction, we want to make sure that you have all the best information. You know what we've been up to in terms of preparation and our team has done and is doing and will continue to do a spectacular job of making sure that all of the pieces are in place when we're able to come back to in-person education. We don't know when that's going to be. We would love to have a very definite date for you. Our numbers in the county and in City of San Bernardino and the part of City of Highland that we serve and our school district are not where they need to be yet. In fact, they're on, kind of on the rise at this point. So we're monitoring them really daily to make sure that we have all of the information we need to have to be able to make the decision for the possibility of becoming, coming back to in-person instruction. I want to thank, as Mrs. Rogers did, I want to thank our team that assembled the, and put together the meeting tonight. They've really worked hard to make it interactive, to give you what we think is the critical information that you'll need, but also to carve out plenty of time to answer any questions and to listen to you. One of the things that we're really focused on doing as a school district is becoming better listeners. We know that all of our plans have the best of intentions, but it's really how they translate into the experiences that you're having with your students that make all the difference. And we learn so much from you every time we have one of these town hall meetings. We've had several already this year and they were great listening and learning experiences for us. I have no doubt that tonight is going to be the same. And so I'll finish by saying, we, we really want to come back to school. I have not met a person yet that wouldn't love to see teachers and kids live in-person interaction. And, and we, we really, really want to do that. But we also want to do it when it's safe to do so. And you've heard our board, it's actually become their anthem almost, is when it is safe to do so, we're going to bring those kids back. We're going to bring our wonderful staff back and get, get to teaching in-person. In the meantime, we're going to continue to learn as we have and, and continue to make the distance learning program better. I think it's getting better all the time. We get to visit classrooms on occasion and we're seeing different types of instruction, different types of resources, different types of engagement. And so we hope that's the experience, your experience you're having as well. But ultimately, we want to keep our kids and their families safe as well as our team members and their families safe when we return to in-person instruction. So thank you again for your patience, for your partnership, and most of all, for being here tonight to help us learn right along with you and get better at how we're serving you and your kids. So thank you, Dr. Monárez, for giving me a couple of minutes to share.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. We appreciate your words of wisdom and encouragement. Next slide, please. So if you've been following our board meetings, you've seen this, this slide multiple times. Our board made that courageous decision back in spring to shutter our classrooms right in March to say that we need to close our, our schools right now to keep our students and our families and our staff safe. And then they continue to keep this, our schools shuttered and closed based off of these four principles. And, and these principles are the following. They, we need to make sure that we ensure the health and physical safety of our students and our staff. We need to be sure that we're adhering to federal, state, and county guidelines while working to provide high-quality learning experiences and providing safe and accessible working conditions for our staff. And so these, these principles have not changed. They continue to guide the decisions of San Bernardino City Unified Governing Board. And families, we understand this is a very difficult decision as Dr. Volkmer said. It's what we call a dilemma, right? There's not a right or wrong. It is really about what is best for you and your family. And even within your family, it may be different for one child compared to another. We were just in a meeting with a parent who shared that exact sentiment that one of her children were doing, just excelling with distance learning and the other one needed some more supports. So it's very much a personal decision. And when we think about what COVID has, the, the impact of COVID on our lives, it's changed our lives dramatically. And we're all trying to find a sense of normalcy. We all want that for ourselves and for our children. And as caregivers, you want to make sure that your children are safe, that they are still learning and that they're prepared for their future. We saw that in some of your, your, your comments to us that you shared for this evening. And so we thank you for that. Please know we want the same exact for, same, same thing that you want, we want for your children. And I'm a mother, and so I've asked myself multiple times, if my daughter was still of school age, what would I want for Natalie? What would I be deciding right now? And I understand, because I think about it deeply, it would be a very difficult decision. But ultimately, I would do what would be best for my daughter and what I felt comfortable with in terms of sending her to, to school or keeping her home. What you need tonight is information. You need to know how you can best answer this dilemma for yourself and for your family. So that's what we plan on doing for you tonight. In addition, as Dr. Volkmer shared, what you ask us really helps us and helps us to know where we need to get better. So you inform us. You give us so much information and we greatly appreciate that. So thank you for being here tonight. And finally, I just want to encourage you to continue to watch our board meetings and follow us on social media so that you can continue to stay connected. Next slide, please. So this slide is not new. If you have been following us on board meetings, we have, and I have, or I'm sorry, this slide will be translated on the next, the next slide. So just our, our Spanish-speaking parents, you'll have a moment to look at this in Spanish as well. But this describes our different phases for learning opportunities for our youth. As you know, we are currently still in phase one, which is distance learning. Tonight, we're going to focus, our presentation to you is going to be focused on phase three. That is what we are asking for your preference. Do you want to move into, do you want your child to participate in the blended learning phase three? Or because you do have a choice, do you want to stay in what we're going to call extended distance learning? And so tonight, our presentation to you will be specifically about phase three, but we will answer any questions that you have as they relate to phase one, phase two, or phase three. Next slide, please. And so here is the same visual for our, our Spanish-speaking families. Again, we are going to focus on phase three as our, our point of information for you as a community so you can make the decision about phase three, but we will be answering questions that you need in order to make that decision wherever it falls in this progression of instructional models. Next slide, please. And so since the summertime, we have been closely monitoring the state, the federal, and the local guidance. And from those various entities, there are four primary guidelines that we must follow when it is safe, deemed safe to do so, to offer in-person learning experiences. The first one is that every individual must wear a mask. An individual means student and staff. And so our board has already passed board policy requiring all students' employees to wear masks and masks will be provided. For our younger students, they're asked to wear a face covering or a face shield. And for our grades three through 12, they're going to be required to wear a mask. Now, for any of our learners who cannot wear a mask, maybe due to a medical condition, maybe due to some other need, there will be accommodations made for those learners and/or that staff. And that is in our board policy. But face coverings is one of the primary ways to, to minimize the impact of COVID. And so that is a requirement that will be a part of San Bernardino City Unified's reopening. The second guideline is that physical distancing must be practiced. Well, this has a huge impact on our schools since we cannot adequately house all our students on campus all at the same time and still maintain six feet of distancing. So tonight, you will see a video. The video will show you how we're preparing our schools to guide students and staff to maintain the six feet of, six feet of distancing. It's very much like what you see when you go into grocery stores or other shopping centers. We have signage, we have guidance, we have just, just information to give our students and our staff. But it's specifically because of this need to have physical distancing that we have to offer a blended learning model. Otherwise, we'd rather have all of our students back on campus, but we just don't have the physical space. So that's really important for, for everyone to understand. And that's the second guidance from the state. The third one is the importance of hand washing and sanitizing. And this must be part of our daily routines. And so again, you will hear how we have purchased additional resources and supplies to support this very important routine that needs to happen on a daily basis and the training that we will do with our staff and that they will then do with our students to make sure that everyone's following this very important guidance. And then finally, and this is newer guidance, but it's still something we must follow. We've recently, recently received clear guidance that we need to minimize movement and minimize the number of students that travel together. So I want to emphasize the word minimize. And this, this all plays into how we will be setting up our schools once we know which students are coming back. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sandra Rodriguez and she will talk through why it's so important for us to know from you what you would like to do for your child.
Thank you, Dr. Monárez. We know that as families, you are the nucleus of, of how we do business. And so the family choice is really important and the center of, of our next steps. So once our families make a choice for their students, you can have that click. We need to know how many students will be taking part or participating in blended learning. As you may know, all of our programs are driven by student enrollment. And so based on the number of students who choose to go into a blending learning program, that will dictate our next steps, which is, let's go to the click, is making sure that we have enough personal protective equipment, hand sanitizing stations, and all the things that go along with making sure that your student is safe on campus. And so we have a formula of how many face masks that we're going to be issuing to each student. And so we need to make sure that we have enough when your students are on our campuses. We also have to make sure that our schools are ready. And so at our schools, and you will see in the video, that we have to make sure that our schools are outfitted to maintain the social distancing that is required by the public health department. And so we need to make sure that our schools are outfitted with Plexiglas, outfitted with air purifiers. And so we need to make sure that we know how many classrooms must be ready to accept the students that will be coming. In addition to that, our schools are staffed with teachers. And so, next click. We need to make sure, based on our enrollment, how many teachers and staff will we need to have available for blended learning? That means that these staff members are going to be required to go to our campuses. And just like any other employer, we have employees who range in age and also have, may have some medical issues themselves. And so we need to take that into account so that we can determine the number of appropriate staff in order to serve our students. In addition to that, as we're making sure that your students are safe and healthy on our school campuses, we need to make sure that teachers are trained and custodians are trained and everyone that's going to be interacting with students are trained in safety procedures. And so all of that is based on knowing the number of students who are actually going to be setting foot on our campuses. In addition to that, there's some additional factors that we need to be aware of. And that means that once we know how many students, then we can start preparing the actual schedules because we need to know how many students are going to be participating on the number of days that they're going to be selected to participate in. We need to make sure that we have enough food for our students who are in blended learning as well as the number of students who remain in distance learning. We need to make sure that we offer the adequate amount of supplies. As you know, students are not sharing materials. And so we need to make sure that every student who is participating in our in-person blended learning has supplies that are uniquely for them. In addition to that, we have to make sure that once we know how many students are coming, do they need transportation? And then there, we'll learn a little bit more about this as we have, continue our conversation with you, is that we need to make sure that there's social distancing on our school buses. And then many of you are asking about our CAPS program, our award-winning CAPS program. Our CAPS program will continue, but it will continue in a virtual environment. And so we hope that this kind of gives you a snapshot of all the things that we need to consider as we're preparing for your student to return to school for blended learning. Next slide.
Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Good evening, families and community. I'm Eric Vatier, the Safety and Emergency Manager for the SBCUSD and am tasked with leading our efforts in the response during the COVID pandemic. Since day one of this pandemic, hundreds of our employees have been working around the clock, sometimes six days a week, developing procedures as well as purchasing and installing all of the physical items needed to make sure the safety of our staff, students, and community is at the, is at the top of our priority. We have worked closely with our public health officials to meet all the requirements to open when it's deemed safe to do so. When your child returns to school, they will find a safe and welcoming environment. Each student will receive several cloth face coverings for their permanent use. Face coverings are required to be worn by anyone on school district property. Signs reminding everyone to maintain distance, wear face coverings, and wash their hands will be placed everywhere from the parking lots to the classrooms. Staff and students will pass through several kiosks to have their temperatures taken and ensure they are wearing their face coverings correctly. Restrooms will have reduced capacity and will be cleaned frequently along with other highly traveled areas. For now, common use of areas such as playgrounds, cafeterias, locker rooms, and libraries will not be allowed. Our planning efforts will ensure minimal movement outside of small groups with the same students, known as cohorts. You'll hear more about that later. In the event of a potential COVID exposure, we will immediately notify the Department of Public Health and implement our closure, cleaning, and notification guidelines that have been developed. We also have our own internal contact tracing team. We are now going to show you a video outlining many of the items I've shared. David, can you play the video, please?
Hi, my name is Paige and I'm a sixth grader at Richardson Prep High Middle School. I'm looking forward to returning to campus when schools in the San Bernardino City Unified School District are safe to reopen. While we are not yet sure when we can go back to the schools we all miss, we know that hundreds of district employees have been hard at work to ensure our schools are clean and safe for us. Let's take a look at some of the biggest changes that have taken place across the district since the coronavirus closed our schools in March. These are a few of the many tools that will help keep germs at bay. Face coverings are required to be worn at all times while on district campuses. But don't worry, schools will keep extras on hand if you forget them. More than 3,000 hand sanitizer stations have been placed strategically in classrooms and other high-traffic areas. And we will all be reminded to sanitize our hands frequently while in school. Posters and signage will remind everyone to regularly wash their hands, maintain physical distance, and self-monitor for COVID-19 symptoms. And our schools will be asking parents and guardians to check their children's temperature before sending students to school. Hundreds of temperature screening kiosks have been installed at the entrance to all our schools and office buildings. These stations will screen each person coming to our facilities to ensure they're wearing a face covering and are not running a fever. And there are smaller, but equally important, changes taking place across our campuses. Drinking fountains are being converted into bottle filling stations that are safer. Schools are also taking steps to ensure that physical distancing measures are also in place in student restrooms. Markers have been placed on the ground to indicate appropriate places to stand to ensure six feet of physical distance inside and outside classrooms and throughout school campuses. Student desks have been spaced out by removing extra classroom furniture and Plexiglas providers have been installed on student desks and where physical distancing is not possible or in places where interactions are common. Our district invested in powerful, state-of-the-art medical-grade HEPA filter units to provide cleaner air in classrooms and offices. These air circulation units can quietly filter the air in an average-sized classroom four times every 30 minutes. Pretty neat, huh? And MIRV-11 filters have also been installed on rooftop air conditioning units across the district. Custodians will play an important role in the sanitation of schools and they have received additional training in cleaning procedures. That's important because they'll be using a new tool called an electrostatic sprayer to sanitize high-traffic areas throughout the day and after the school bell rings. Before schools welcome students back, industrial hygienists, administrators, and other personnel will carefully walk through each campus to make sure all conditions are optimal and safe for students and staff. They will be verifying that schools meet stringent federal, state, and local regulations. As you can see, our school district and Board of Education are at the forefront of the fight against COVID-19. This ongoing work is aimed at ensuring the highest degree of safety and adherence to state and local mandates. With these extra precautions and your help, San Bernardino and Highland Schools will be ready to welcome students back when it's safe to do so. Stay tuned to learn more about additional measures the San Bernardino City Unified School District is taking to keep students and staff safe. And be sure to follow SBCUSD on social media for the latest updates about school operations. Remember, we're all in this together. Hope to see you soon. For more information, visit our website at sbcusd.com/readySBCUSD.
I want to thank our communications department for putting that great video together and Paige, our wonderful narrator. I'm going to now turn it over to Sam Precy, our administrator of operations. He's going to discuss some of the safety measures that you saw in more detail. Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Vatier, and good evening, families. I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes covering a few of the physical distancing measures that we're installing and much of which you've seen in the video, which again, they did a fantastic job with that. But a lot of these significant investments that your district has made is for the purpose of ensuring our children, staff, and community are safe when onsite and of course, when, when it's safe to return to school. One of the items that you saw in the video was the medical-grade HEPA filtration units. It's a medical-grade air scrubber and it takes the air that's in the space and goes through that HEPA filter unit, as she had mentioned, four times every 30 minutes and cleans the air. And we, in addition to that, we're also replacing the Hy-Vac rooftop units. So in combination between those two areas, we're far exceeding the California Department of Education guidelines for return-to-school operation. We're also installing hand washing stations throughout the school district. They're going to be allowing, affording the opportunity for the students to sanitize and wash and clean their hands as well as the hand sanitizers that are going to be at every occupied space. In addition to that, we're also having the Plexiglas, which you guys did see in the video. It was very clear, we, we only have the name of the school on the edging. We wanted to make sure we minimize the distractions and the interferences between the teacher as well as the students and vice versa. We've also installing drinking fountains modified to bottle fillers. And in those situations where we did have existing water dispensers, we're also replacing those with touchless drinking dispensers as well. The temperature scanning stations that we're installing are going to be contactless, so touchless units. In addition to verifying temperature, there are also going to be verified that the person that is approaching is also having a face covering and it's being worn correctly. We have to meet both of those conditions. It's pretty cool software, but you have to meet both conditions in order to move on to the next. in order to move on to the next phase or next stage. We also have, we touched about 25,000 pieces of furniture in order to fit our classrooms for the capacity of 12 to 16 students to ensure our proper physical distancing is in place. In addition to that, we're also installing just around 20,000 pieces of signage throughout the school campuses. That's going to be those wind runners that you saw, A-frame signs, door signs, signage throughout the campuses and administration areas. These are also going to be in Spanish as well as in English. They're also going to be age-appropriate, so for the K through third grade, they're going to be cartoonish-type characters and pictographs. And then as you get older in age, it's going to be more adult-oriented type signage. For the temperature scanning stations, you know, when the child or staff member approaches those, it's going to take, we figure, about 10 seconds per student. And it's also going to be, we're putting enough units in place, so we would have about 30 minutes, we're accounting for about 30 minutes of check-in time in total. So I think that's about it. Next slide, please. Now I'll be turning that over to Marie Espinoza to discuss transportation.
Good afternoon, SBCUSD families. My name is Marie Espinoza. I'm the Director of Student Transportation. It looks like we might be having a little bit of technical difficulties. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the following are the safety measures that will be in place to keep our babies safe when we resume busing. As a state mandate, face masks must be worn by all students before boarding the bus. If a student shows up without a mask, one will be provided before boarding. Students must grab onto the handrail as they step into the bus. Therefore, a hand sanitizer will be provided before boarding the bus. Physical distancing seating will be provided to ensure we maintain adequate space between students, which also means we'll be reducing our busing capacity by two-thirds. Where students are not seated, windows will be open to ensure ventilation in the bus. And lastly, buses will be sanitized after every leg of service. There will be an attendant on every single bus to both help with the boarding of students, the seating of the students, and also the sanitizing of the buses after each leg. Next slide, please.
Good evening. As you can imagine, there's a lot of new learning for our employees. And so we wanted to share with you all of the training that we are conducting for our employees at this time. We are conducting training around safety procedures. For example, proper handwashing, maintaining six feet of distance and the importance of that, the proper way to wear a mask, sanitation procedures, a number of different safety procedures that will ensure that not only our staff are safe and healthy, but also that they know how to keep our students safe, and they'll be able to train our students in these same procedures. In addition, we're aware that it's very important that our staff are able to recognize needs of staff and students around mental health and wellness. And so we are conducting training in conjunction with the county as well as with our own Health Services Department to ensure that all staff are aware of how to help our students and staff maintain a healthy life and healthy mental health. We're also continuing to train staff in distance learning. And we're going to have a couple of colleagues here going to share a little bit more about what we're doing specifically for our nurses and specifically around that distance learning piece. Of course, all of this training currently is being conducted online. And once our board deems it safe for all of us to return, before students return, we will make sure that our staff receive some in-person learning on these same topics, as well as the training that we're currently doing online. I'd like to invite Colleen Williams to speak just a moment about what we're doing specifically for our nurses in terms of training.
Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for being with us tonight. Director of Student Wellness and Support Services, which also includes Health Services and our Nurses and LVN staff. To just answer the question quickly about all of our staff, we are providing training for them on monitoring and looking for student mental health concerns, ensuring that we get our students the resources that they need as soon as possible. In addition, our nurses, health aides at every campus, and our LVNs are receiving training and are part of the partnership with our San Bernardino County Department of Public Health. So they have helped to facilitate many flu vaccine clinics and COVID testing sites as well to make sure that we're providing those supports to our community. We also have a partnership with Loma Linda where our nurses are getting up-to-date information and training from one of the American Pediatric Association doctors. And so we are happy to make sure that they are on the cutting edge of those services and supports and then informing our guidance in letting our schools be as absolutely healthy as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, SBCUSD families. This is Michelle Cleveland. I'm the Director of Accountability and Educational Technology. I want to assure you as we continue to move forward in this year that all of our teachers and staff are continuing to receive professional development around all of our online learning tools, ranging from Google Classroom to Google Meet to Zoom and a variety of applications that I'm sure have become very familiar to you in your homes. We are going to continue to provide this ongoing professional development for our teachers no matter what environment that we're in. As we continue in distance learning, we're going to continue to find new ways to engage your students and make sure that their experience is the best that it can possibly be in the distance learning format. And as we move towards it becoming safe to return in some kind of blended learning model, then we'll pivot and we will start to develop our teachers around those pieces as well. But we are here to serve you and your students, and we are just grateful for the opportunity to be with you tonight to share with you all of these things. I'm going to transition now to our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Mrs. Applegate, who's going to talk to you a little bit more about the curriculum and instructional practices that we are planning for your students. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland, and good evening to our SBCUSD families. It's a pleasure to be here to serve you. So what we wanted to do is give you a snapshot of what it might look like in blended learning. So all of you have had the experience of distance learning, which is 100% online learning. See, we wanted to be transparent and bring you what a blending learning experience might look like. But we do want to be clear that, as I said in all transparency, it's going to look different from the way learning looked pre-COVID. So some of the things that we wanted to point out is even though it is face-to-face learning, it's going to be a phased-in face-to-face learning. So not all of our students will be back at the exact same time. We want to make sure that we provide the maximum security for your students and safety. So you heard a lot about cohorts, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. But we're bringing students in in a limited basis so that there won't be too much exposure to our cohorts. We know that with some students, they're going to appreciate having that extra in-person support with social, emotional learning and academics. There will also be some opportunities for hands-on learning, like labs or students using tools that they otherwise are not using in distance learning. We will continue to have technology integration. And as you heard earlier, for some students, they're thriving in distance learning and they're doing fabulous. But some of our students may need that face-to-face in order to be more engaged, so there'll be more engagement opportunities for those students that need them. And then our educators will have the opportunity to give immediate feedback to our students as well. So these are some of the differences that you will see with blended learning and so that you can start maybe thinking a little bit about how that would benefit your student and if that's something that you may want to do. However, I do want to emphasize that no matter what program you choose, we are committed to a high-quality program, whether you decide to stay in distance learning or you decide to join us in a limited fashion in blended learning. So now I will pass it over to Dr. Funches. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, parents. I'm Marcus Funches. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Glad to be here tonight. And I just wanted to stop and say that we thank you, parents, for your ongoing support and efforts as we journey through distance learning together. We know that you have many questions about in-person learning and the ability or the possibility of keeping your child's teacher based on the learning model that you choose. I want to provide you with a brief overview of our process for determining teacher assignments based on student learning needs and based on your choices. So I'll start with the parent survey. Recently, the district requested your preference for keeping your students in distance learning or placing them in the blended learning model, which includes in-person instruction. And from the survey information that you provide, we're able to determine the number of students who will participate in both models, which may be in-person learning, which is what we call blended learning, and/or distance learning. And then on to the teacher assignment. Because once we determine the number of students participating in each learning model, we can begin the process to assign the specific number of teachers needed for each model. And so based on student participation, some district teachers will be assigned to in-person or blended learning, while some teachers or some district teachers will be assigned to distance learning. The teacher assignment process we follow will follow our agreement with the Teachers Union, which takes into account teacher seniority and other internal factors for teacher availability as well. So then that brings us to possible teacher change. There is a possibility that your child's teacher may change as the district works through the process of assigning teachers to each learning model based on student participation. So that means whether we have a set number of students for in-person and a set number of students for distance learning, we will assign teachers based on that need. We thank you in advance for your patience and understanding as we work through this process. And just like Mrs. Applegate stated, it is our goal to provide your child with excellent learning results, no matter which learning option that you choose. Hopefully, that provides some answers. We do know that there were several questions from our educators that may have to do with the negotiation process. For example, staying in distance learning by choice, we will provide answers as we go through the negotiations process for some of our educators. So thank you. Hopefully, that answers a few of your questions tonight, and I will be answering those in the chat as they come up about teacher or keeping your child's educator.
Oh, hello again. This is Mrs. Applegate again. And what we'd like to share with you is just a very, very general sample of a student's schedule. And the reason that this is still so general is because, as we mentioned, we still have many factors to take into consideration before we start attaching time slots and things like that to schedules. We really need to look at how many students, how many of our scholars are coming back. We need to know how many of our staff members are able to come back. There are considerations with transportation. So as you can see, I understand it could be quite frustrating. It's a frustration for our parents not knowing the exact times that will take place for now. But what we can share with you, we do want to have some particular takeaways that hopefully will be helpful to you in helping you to make a decision. So as we look at this sample schedule, currently, right now, all face-to-face instruction will be taking place during a morning block, depending on the cohort that your student is assigned to. So again, we have to be very careful about maintaining these cohorts pure so that we don't have students being overexposed. So we're trying to really look out for the safety of your children. So instruction would take place in a morning block. The starting times are very close right now to what currently exists. But of course, that also depends on other issues that we need to look at. But instruction will take place in the morning. All students will be in distance learning in the afternoon. As you can see, students will be coming to us in person for no more than two days a week. So we want to emphasize instruction face-to-face takes place in the morning for a morning block. There will be instruction face-to-face for a maximum of two days a week. As you can see, there is no school on Wednesday. Wednesday will be a day for sanitization and cleaning and making sure that everything is ready and taken care of for our students in order to maintain a healthy environment. And another point that I'd like to get across is our students will continue to get meals. So at this time, I would like our Nutrition Services Director, Adrian Robles, to give you a little bit of a rundown on how the meal distribution will work. Ms. Robles?
Thank you, Mrs. Applegate. Good evening, everyone. Nutrition Services will be continuing to provide our curbside grab-and-go meal service for all students, whether you are a 100% distance learner or blended learner. Meals will be available, just as they currently are, every Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m., and each student will continue to receive up to seven days of breakfast and lunches along with five days of supper and snack. If your child does attend school onsite, a grab-and-go meal will be offered to them to take home to eat. And that's all I have to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robles. So if we can leave you with at least some information to be able to make somewhat of an educated decision, again, is just knowing that these schedules will, of course, be more defined and more specific as we get more information about students coming back in person, staff that is able to come back. But for now, know that currently, they will not be coming back into face-to-face instruction for more than two days a week, and they will be morning blocks so far. So we will bring you more information as we can. We understand it's frustrating, but this is what we have now. And of course, we would appreciate your feedback as well. Thank you.
So as you can see, there is the process of bringing students back to school is very involved and extremely complicated. We understand that there is hesitation and some concern about whether you choose to have your student return back to school in a blended environment. That choice is for our families to make. We just need to know which ones, which families would like their student to return back to school in a blended learning environment so that we can prepare for their safe arrival. We understand that, as Mrs. Applegate mentioned, it is frustrating when we don't have all the answers for you. But as you know, you know, this whole situation is evolving and things change from moment to moment. But we want you to be assured and secure that when your student, if you make the decision for your student to return back to campus, that all these safeguards will be in place to help your student. Again, it's a personal choice. We understand and we respect that. We just hope that, you know, we hope that we weren't in this situation to begin with, and we miss your students. We miss just being around our colleagues and really, we love what we do. And so this has been a challenge for everyone. But we want you to understand that there's many factors that go into making it possible. We respect your decision. We hope that you continue to think about it and make your choices known to the district through our Ares Portal by November 20th. There has been some conversation in the chat in regards to, once you make your choice, do you have to stick with it? You can change your choice up to November 20th without any issue or concern. After November 20th, that is the date in which we will count. It's kind of our census date for when we make preparations for staffing, supplies, and to ensure that we have schools ready to go. You can change your student's program if you want them to return back to a distance-only environment. There will be a process in place similar to a request to change schools. That process will be outlined as we get closer to the November 20 date. Thank you very much, and we hope that you understand a little bit better of all the different considerations that need to take place as we prepare for your student to return to school. Next slide.
So we're about to, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and thank you for the team, for all of the information, for your time and your commitment to trying to make a very challenging situation as comprehensible, but, you know, informational as possible. We want to, before we go into our questions, and thank you for those who are putting it into the We want to, before we go into our questions, and thank you for those who are putting it into the chat. They came fast and furious, so I'm sure we missed some, and we apologize for that. We ask that you either repost them or just when we get to the live opportunity for you to ask your question. Before we go there, though, we want to make sure that you know about our website, Ready SBCUSD. You could scan that QR code right now, and it will take you to that website, or you can just go into the district website when you need some very generalized information, frequently asked questions, access to childcare resources. We want you to know that that's there for all of our district information as it relates to San Bernardino City Unified Preparation for Returning to School and just managing this pandemic right now. Our next slide, next slide, please, is a list of all the different departments and the contact phone numbers if you have some detailed questions or specific questions that you need answered. So please take a picture of this. We're also going to be posting this whole presentation on our website for you in the Ready SBCUSD. But those are the phone numbers of different departments that can help you with more detailed questions as it relates to that specific department. So with that, we will open it up for questions. So next slide. And so the process is, if you can either raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and a team member will call on you, or take your camera off and show your hand raised, and then just, please, just be patient with us. There's quite a few of you on here. There's over a couple of hundred. But we, again, we will stay on and do our best to answer your questions. You can see, very complex, trying to make this happen for everybody. And we're just trying to do the best under our circumstances and make sure that your children are educated. So with that, it is your turn, families.
Mr. Chavez, can you stop sharing the screen so it makes it easier for us to see who has their hand raised? Thank you. We can start with Kathleen Valdez. I'm going to go ahead and request to unmute you if you can just accept.
Hi, yes, I have a question about bus riders. I know they were saying that they were going to screen the students as they were coming to school, but are they going to be screening the students before they board the buses? And the second question is, is if the teacher, if a parent chooses distance learning, let's say, now, and then later on, we decide, like, or we find out that their teacher is going to be a different teacher, how will that transition be done for the students, you know, as smoothly as possible? Because they don't know right now the other first, first, or second, or third grade teachers. They just know their teachers. So how are the, is the district going to handle that transition process? That's it. Thank you.
So I will answer the transportation question. We are asking our parents to screen their students before they leave for school, and a secondary screening will take place once a student arrives to school. We will not be screening before they board the bus.
And then in regards to the second question about how will parents be notified, or how will the student be notified? We will notify all families about their classroom at least four weeks prior to students coming back to campus. If, at that point in time, there is a request to change, people will be asked, or parents will be asked to follow the process to request their change of program. And a process will be, is being developed and will be made public for everyone to use when we get closer to that date.
Molly Horn. I'm going to go ahead and request to unmute you.
Yes, hi. So my daughter is in kinder, and I just have a question as far as, how is it going to be set up for the little ones? Are they going to be able to interact with each other? Or is it going to be kind of distance learning with scary plastic things around you and facing forward? Or how is that going to be set up for the little kids? And will there be recess or anything like that? I mean, how much interaction will they get to have with each other? And that's it.
Ms. Applegate, do you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
Yes, I just unmuted. So for our little ones, thank you for the question. There will be physical distancing in place for them. We are trying to limit interaction. So to answer that question, if there was recess, there would still be recess with that cohort of students, but they still are supposed to be keeping the physical distance for their own safety. I don't know if Mr. Vatir has anything to add to that, but the classrooms have been set up for your students' maximum safety.
Thanks, Ms. Applegate. Yeah, just to elaborate on that. So there is, there will be measures in place inside the room to keep the students six feet apart, the plexiglass in place where they can't, and then the face covering. So we know, you know, being a parent, for myself, we know this is a new culture for all of us. This is a challenging time, and we're all going to have to adjust. But we want the kids to be in a safe and welcoming environment.
Okay, Lisa VP.
Hello. Hello. First of all, thank you for this informative meeting, and I appreciate all the hard work that many of you put into all these modifications. I'm wondering if you could give us an idea of the school day for secondary schools in particular? How often will they be switching periods and classrooms? And if you could address the movement through the hallways in, you know, highly congested high schools like Coe-Hone High School, where two of my kids attend?
So, Mr. Vatir, did you want to address the movement? Because I know that we're trying to maintain the cohorts pure and minimize movement. So I don't know if you had anything in particular about hallway, hallways and things like that?
Yeah, so we're still working on all the logistics of the movement, but it'll, it'll likely be staggered, so it won't, it won't be a bell ringing and the hallways fill up. It'll be a staggered movement if there is any, for what we're looking at and models that we're seeing across the nation and actually in other countries that we're following, is movement from the teachers to the classrooms and not the classrooms around the campus. So all those things are still being worked on as we speak.
And then the question around the scheduling, we've seen quite a few of them for the secondary. So this is where our challenge lies with our high school scheduling, most specifically, maybe a little bit for our middle school. And then I just want any of the team to join in. When, first, we need to know from you who's coming back, right? That's our first thing. And once we know that, then we'll be able to know how many students we can have in the classrooms at it. No, let me rephrase that. We know how many desks we can put in the classrooms. What we don't know is how many students are going to fill those desks. That's what we need from you. Once we have that, then we know, can we divide the school into half and have enough space for all of those students? Or might we need to divide the school into possibly fourths? And that's going to be contingent on who comes back. So it does kind of becomes this chicken and an egg thing, and we know that that is frustrating. It's frustrating for us as well. The worst-case scenario, I guess, I guess, maybe I shouldn't say worse. The most challenging scenario might be is that your child, if you're in a very heavy populated school, but not even, I guess, our high schools, you could have on-campus instruction one day a week. And then the rest of the time could be in distance learning. And again, that is, you hear all those "could"s because it is solely contingent on numbers and how many students we can have on campus in our classrooms. Once we know that, then we can give you a more definite schedule of what that's going to look like. We really spent a lot of time trying to figure out, how can we give you enough information so you can make a solid decision and not tell you something that we won't be able to produce? And so we are, you know, stuck in this difficult place. We're hoping for two days a week where you would, your student would at least be able to see each one of their their classroom periods within those two days. And then the rest of the time would be in distance learning, but we cannot promise that until we have numbers. And so, again, we wish we could. We can't not at this point. I don't know, Ms. Applegate, if there's anything else you want to add to that? And if that answers, I mean, it doesn't answer the question from the mom, but it gives you a picture of what we're trying to do.
And just to give our families a little bit more reassurance, we do have a very comprehensive team of high school principals, of specialists in master schedules, and various people who are helping out to develop these schedules. But as Dr. Monada said, we need to look at the number of students coming in. And also, don't forget, we also are really looking out for the safety of our workforce as well because we know that not all of our teachers may be able to come back, as Dr. Funches had said earlier. So there are so many things to be taken into consideration, but just know that we do have your students' best interest in mind. Safety is number one. And we do have a comprehensive group of master schedule experts that will be tackling these schedules once we have more information, and we will bring that to you as soon as we can.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and go with Elizabeth Jaramillo. I'm going to go ahead and ask to unmute, and then, there we go.
Just a question about the scheduling. So I saw for, let's say, a group, they had Monday, Tuesday in the morning, and then the afternoon was online distant learning. Is that going to be like a Zoom meeting with the teacher, or is that just when they would then do their homework?
If they had the in-person learning and what we call synchronous learning with their teacher in the morning, then they would have what we call asynchronous learning, or kind of learning on their own and completing assignments in the afternoon. So it depends on what they came for in the morning. However, there was a question also about Wednesday, so I didn't want people to walk away thinking there was no school on Wednesday. Students will still be online. Distance learning is just Wednesday. Nobody will be, no students will be in school or in-person learning.
Thank you. We're going to go with Gary Y. Gary, if you want to go ahead and unmute?
Yes. Just a couple of questions in regards to the state regulations. Are any of our responses towards how we feel about this distant learning, does it ever go anywhere to the state? Because I have two kids. I'm not a stay-at-home mom, and it's been just extremely difficult, and I feel that our state needs to know about these. I have a third grader that I just had a conference with on Thursday, and for the first time, I received a poor status on his report cards, and he's not one that's adapting well to this new norm that we're having. I have a kindergarten, a kindergartner. Having to keep her attached to an iPad for four-plus hours is just stressful. I mean, this is, and I've chosen to go with the blended learning, but I just show that it makes it more difficult on these parents who are working, whether working from home, whether they're working, you know, from their business. I just find it more difficult for us than having to take them and then having to have them transferred, transported them back. But, and then the other question is, is what's the difference between all of like these charter schools and these, you know, the private schools? They all supposedly got these waivers. We have charter schools all around us who go in and are in school all day long, and they have yet to be shut down. So I'm curious to know what the difference is between us as the school district and them being charter and a private school having to get waivers to be able to go into school.
So I'll take the first part. I actually remember reading your comment earlier today, and and my heart really sunk when I saw that your son, this is the first time you've received a poor grade for him as a third grader. That's not what we're looking for at all. So that must be extremely frustrating for you as a parent. And, and so I think your question was, you know, how do you get your voice heard at the state level? Is that inaccurate? Kind of, was that really what you were getting at?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons is, how do we get to know that, you know, this isn't always working? I mean, like I said, I'm not a stay-at-home mom. This is not my choice. And I mean, I know it's not anybody's choices, but this, right now, is, it's ruining my kids' education. And, you know, and I feel that our kids' education needs to come first, and if something's not working, then something needs to be done.
Right, right. So I do know that our, and I don't have an exact email that I can send you, but I'll put my email in the chat, and you can send me an email, and I'll find how you can get your voice heard at the state level, okay?
That would be great.
Yeah, so that, because I do know that the the California Department of Education has done some surveys, but I don't know how those are being transmitted and what's coming up next. I haven't seen anything lately. But I'll put my, again, my email in the chat, and you can email me, and I'll do, I'll see what I can do for you. In reference to your question around the charter schools, so our charter schools have not, it might be more of our private schools from what we have, because we've been trying to do our research about who's open and who's not. Now, I can be off on the charter schools, so I don't, please don't quote me on it. There is a process by which we can be applying to the, for an elementary waiver. I think that's probably what you're referring to, where we can work with our, with all of our stakeholders. So that's our parents, our teacher unions, our just our employees, and fill out, submit an application to the county Board of the County Public Health, and then they would review our application in collaboration with State Public Health and determine if we can open or not. Our transmission rates in San Bernardino City, the actual city and Highland, you know, the border areas for San Bernardino have continued to be so high that we don't even think, we don't believe that the county will even approve it. And so we haven't gone down that route yet because our numbers have, rather than decreasing, they've been increasing. For smaller schools, and, you know, single schools like a private school or a charter school, their numbers look so different. And so that has implications. And I know that's, again, not an answer you want to hear as a parent in a, you know, very large public school system. This is the challenge we're facing being a large district. We, you know, it has positives and it has negatives. Positives are, we have a lot more resources. We can offer our families and our children than small districts or even, you know, independent private or charter schools. The challenge is, in a situation like this, our numbers just aren't pending in the right, or trending in the right direction, if you will. But, so I, that is our reality, and tomorrow night at our board meeting, we will be sharing with our board some ways by which, we'll be sharing more information about the elementary waiver, and we'll be sharing some information. The state, we can allow identified students, so these are children with very high needs. We could start allowing them to come in once we have all of our safety precautions in place. So we are almost there as a district. And so that's where we're at right now. I don't think the way you want me to. So if you have a follow-up, I'm more than willing to answer.
Okay, I think I'm good. I mean, I answered it, but, you know, but I'll reach out to you by email and just kind of get some more contact information so that I can kind of voice my opinion of what I think about this, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we go with the next question. Erica Campos, it's your turn. I'm going to mute, ask you to unmute. Erica? Erica, you keep, you please accept the request to unmute?
Yes. Is it unmuted?
Yes, thank you.
It's my real concern. I'm wondering if they're going to change the teachers from the students that are going to stay home? Or they're gonna, the teachers are going to have the same students on home and on classrooms? Is it going to be the same teachers like they're doing in Texas? I know my sister lives over there, and they have the same teachers doing both things. Are they going to be like that, or they're going to have to change the teachers? and they have the same teachers doing both things. Are they going to be like that, or they're going to have to change the teachers?
Hello, Erica. Let me make sure that I understand, and I believe.
Because I don't want my kids, like, my kids are already used to the teachers. They trust their teachers. They don't see their, their friends. So I'm wondering if they stay home, are they going to change their teachers?
Okay. I'll, I'll answer it like this, Erica. Depending on how many students or how many parents choose distance learning and how many choose in-person learning, that will give the district the ability to determine how many teachers we need for distance learning and how many we're going to need for in-person learning. So as we determine the number of teachers needed for both of those models, there's a possibility that your child's teacher may change. Now, we want to do everything within our power to keep students with their teachers. That's, that's always our intent, and to provide an excellent education. But because the numbers will line up in such a way where we have to make a determination of staffing in-person and staffing at home, or distance learning, then I, we, we aren't able to just promise that your child's teacher will stay who they are now, or have, or allow them to have the teacher that they have now. So there's a strong possibility that a teacher change is possible, but we, we want to do everything that we can to make sure that your child is properly educated and receives a good education, no matter which model that you choose.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, next question is from Dory and Dale Bernhardt. Dory and Dale, can you please unmute yourselves?
Hi. My question is, okay, so if we picked blended, and so they're going to have the teacher in the classroom, right? Okay, so the case that they are just doing dis-synchronized distance learning, is a teacher, is it going to be the same teacher? Is a teacher going to be teaching from the classroom to the kids present face-to-face and the kids at home? Is it, do you know what I mean? Or is it a separate teacher? They're going to have one teacher for face-to-face, and then a second teacher for distance?
That's a, that's an excellent question, Dory. I was trying to answer it in the chat. So I'll, I'll, I'll answer it this way. So as you know, as we look at putting these schedules together and working with our union groups, we're still in the process of determining how everything is going to look. But it is our intent right now that if you choose in-person learning, your child's teacher will be the in-person learning teacher, and that you'll have that particular educator. And then for those educate, for those students, sorry, that choose distance learning and stay at home, they're going to have a teacher for that model. Does, does that clarify? Does that help?
It does a little, but it's still, okay, so the kids that, because you're going to have A in class and B at home, and then the, like on Monday and Tuesday, then Thursday and Friday, B will be in the class and A will be at home. So are they going to be getting the same lessons? If they're having the same teacher?
Cohort A would have the same teacher, and cohort B will have their own teacher. That's, that's the intent right now.
Okay, so it wouldn't be the teacher teaching. So each teacher would have half of the class, basically?
No, what, what I meant, and if I, if I confused you at all, the cohort A that we have that you see in the schedule, we, we don't mean that they're going to have two different educators.
Okay.
That, that's it. Yeah, they're not going to have two different teachers.
And my team is here. I don't know if Ms. Cleveland or Ms. Dois On or somebody wanted to explain that a little more. I don't know, I know Ms. Cleveland is here.
Yeah, absolutely. So when we're looking at that, that sample schedule, we're, when you see cohort A and B, it's, it is a teacher's class split in half based on numbers. So usually, for example, in our elementary classrooms, if we had a class of 28, obviously, all 28 students who are assigned to that teacher can't come at the same time because of all of the guidance around social distancing and the safety measures. So we would have to split that class of 28 in half. So in cohort A might have 14 kids, and cohort B might have 14 kids. We can't really provide a lot more information about those cohorts right now, because in order to look at the numbers, we have to have information from our families around which model they're going to want for when this time comes. And that will help Dr. Funches with our unions kind of be able to bargain out what the actual schedule will look like. So the sample that we gave is really a very, a very big overview so that you could kind of see when students might be able to be at campus.
Okay, so, but your student would have one teacher?
Correct.
Or both?
That is correct.
Correct, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have David and Anja next. You can go ahead and ask your question.
Sporting, if, if there is sporting event, are we parents going to be able to come and watch? If so, what's the process?
Hi, David. This is Eric Material. I'll, I'll take a crack at this one. So currently, we're beginning to get into phase one for sports, which is simply conditioning. So we're not sure what sports are going to look like this year. We do want to get everything back as soon as possible, when it's safe to do so. However, we do have to look at the numbers. There are options for spectators as we get into, I believe it's the latter phase of sports, but for the first few phases, there will not, spectators will not be allowed.
Even outside?
Even outside events?
That's correct.
Traveling, are you, are you going to take as many buses that you need to take the kids?
Yes, sir. So the, the physical distancing that will be required on busing will also feed over into any sports travel that we do. So it may be an increase in the buses that we need to have teams transported.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Whitney Huffman?
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, so like I know in Northern California, for example, my niece, they're planning to start soon, and they essentially are going to the classroom, but just taking their Chromebooks, because the teacher is both teaching the kids that are in class and also doing distance learning. So it's like the teacher standing up front. Yeah, she's teaching the kids that are right in front of her, but she's also teaching those kids that are at home on their computers, watching her. And so I'm wondering, that's not the situation here, correct?
Correct. Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. That's correct. That is not our situation. We, we, if your child comes for in-person learning, your child will be in front of a teacher. And then when it is your child's time for the distance learning, because they're part of the, you know, your, the cohorts in distance for those two days, then they will be behind the screen with that same teacher that they were in person with the previous days.
Okay, so they're not just going to go to school to then also sit in front of their computers there?
No.
Okay.
That is not the intent for blended learning, no.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I was trying to unmute myself, and it wouldn't work. Thank you, Dr. Monada.
Thank you. Up next, we have Kim Zamora. Kim, you can go ahead and unmute and ask your question.
Good evening. Will there be a cap placed on how many students can participate in the blended learning? And if so, how will be determined who participates in the blended learning?
I'll answer that question. So at this point in time, we don't have a cap on anybody who is participating in blended learning. And we are not deciding who is going to be part of blended learning. That's a family choice. That's a parent choice. And we will make accommodations for those families who choose to send their students to school. And so we are not limiting the amount of students who will participate in blended learning, should their family make that decision.
Okay, thank you. And Sam's, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question.
Hi, so just in terms of testing, will there be any type of required COVID testing prior to the kids returning to school, or any time during the school year while they're actually physically in school?
So as far as required testing, law does not require it at this time. We're, we're waiting to see what any type of new laws may come out of, of this environment for COVID, whether it be vaccines or mandatory testing, but at this time, there's no man, there's no mandate.
Thank you.
Okay, next question is from Janet Ortiz. Janet, if you can please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all of you for all of the very important information that you're providing. I personally am an employee of the district, and it's very helpful, especially to us when we're calling the parents right now, trying to get a, a preference in areas to, to help further make decisions. So it's very helpful right now. Just personally, with our school, we have some kinder classes that are basically, you know, AM, PM, but I didn't really hear any specifics to, to those students, because we, in a normal circumstances, they would be sharing a classroom. But due to all this, I mean, how would the blended learning choice, basically, how would it happen when we have two classrooms that would normally share a class, a class, I mean, two classes normally sharing a classroom?
So there is a limit as to how many students we can have in a classroom per state guidelines. So they would not be sharing the classroom anymore than what the state allows. So they would probably be in a different classroom, or they would be in different cohorts. But we would not be able to have kindergarten teachers share classrooms anymore under these conditions.
Okay, and one other question, and it may not, I mean, I may not get answered, but will this, all of these decisions being made, will it also be, how to, would it also go into like preschool, like those other, other learning environments that the district offers at this time?
Yes, our preschools and our TKs will also be involved with the blended learning choice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Aguilaprado, it's your turn. Can you please unmute yourself? Aguilaprado? Aguilaprado, are you there? Can you please unmute yourself? It seems like he's not listening anymore. Aguilaprado, are you there?
We can go back to her, Esmeralda.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so Selena, go ahead.
Miki Alexander?
Hello?
Yes, you can go ahead and ask your question.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. At first, I want to thank the district for putting this together and actually listening to the parents out there and actually wanting to have this conversation. So thank you to the district and all the district partners. I actually have six questions, and I'll go in order. If you guys need me to stop, I'll definitely stop. So one, if there is a case that is notified at the school, how will that notify, how, how will that notification go out to the parents? Will it be by email, by phone call? Or because I know of HIPAA, will we actually notify a parent that there is a case at our particular school and/or our classrooms? Two, mandated time. Currently, right now, the mandated time for teachers to have in-face instruction is about four hours, if I'm correct, which I personally don't feel like is enough. I felt the parent that spoke earlier that said that their child prior was getting very great scores, and now they just had the meeting, and they're, they're finding out that, wow, wait a minute, my child isn't. So again, going back to the mandated time, why would it still be a short amount of mandated time, the four hours, even though it's the half-day? My third question. So what if a child does pass all the mandates when they, once they get into classroom, and they have a simple cough, or they have asthma and they have a cough, or they have allergies and they have a cough? Will that child be sent home? Four, teachers. As far as our teachers, how will we know which teachers are prepared to go, whether it's be, whether it's distance learning or blended learning? Because that is a huge decision for us parents, knowing if our particular teachers that our child currently has is going to have their same teacher. Five, siblings. If we have a lot of parents that have siblings that go to either the same schools, maybe one sibling might go to a middle school and a high school, will it be out there so our siblings can have the same time blocks? I saw your time blocks, whether it be A or B, will they have the same time blocks? And then my last question, but not least question, caps. For parents that are like myself, that, you know, two-parent household and they work, caps being after school, will it be just for those two days after school? Will caps be there? I saw on that Wednesday, there was no class, so will caps be on that day? Or will it only be on the days where we actually have in-class instruction and only for a portion of the day? So a little bit with that, with that cap, with caps being a portion of the day, what will caps look like for those students, especially, you know, for me, parent that is working? You know, my child right now is going to the YMCA and, you know, paying a little, a fun, a fun amount of money for that. So that also goes back to the question, I think another parent asked, why should I keep my child in the district learning versus in cap in, he's with the Y right now, which is about the same price of the private schools and/or the charter schools that are actually in session right now? I know that was a lot of stuff to, to take in, but again, thank you guys for your time today, and hopefully you can answer all my questions, and if you can't, that's okay. I'm available to talk one-on-one, whether it be by email and/or phone. Again, thank you for your time.
So I will attempt to ans, answer the minutes question and the question about the siblings. So the minutes that the state has put out will be our guide for what we need to do when our kids come back, whether it's distance learning or blended learning, or a combination which is blended learning. We will adhere to the minutes that the state has required with SB 98. And so that is part of the reason why we don't have specific time schedules just yet, because we want to make sure that we address all those details once we know how many of our scholars are coming back and how many of our teachers are available. But of course, we will adhere to what the state has required from us in both synchronous and asynchronous learning and the total amount of, of minutes. That will guide our work. As far as the siblings go, we will try our best to try to keep siblings at least on the same day for our parents' convenience. But again, a lot of that depends on the numbers, but that will be a consideration that we will definitely take very seriously when we're putting together the cohorts. And then the other questions, I wrote down the two that pertain to me, so I don't know who can jump in on the other two.
Mrs. Alexander, this is Eric Material. I'm going to try to take, and thank you for your questions and for your compliment at the beginning. I'm going to take question one and three regarding COVID. So notifications, how might those occur? So our contact tracing team will be working in lockstep with the County Department of Public Health's team. So our contact tracing team will be working in lockstep with the county department of public health's team. And so once they determine who's been impacted at what levels, notifications will be made via phone to those respective families with guidance. Generally, what you're hearing when we're doing it now is, is just monitor for symptoms, provide testing information if families choose to get tested and any quarantine recommendations that may come with that. So that's the testing, or I'm sorry, the notifications. Question number three, regarding the COVID symptoms, I heard you mention about a cough. So we'll be training our staff in what to look for as far as COVID symptoms. In the event that we do have a student that has COVID symptoms, we'll contact the family, just like we would if, if if they sent their child to school, was feeling ill, and ask them to come pick them up, monitor for symptoms, provide the testing locations, et cetera. Hope that answered it.
And that's out. I'll take question, I'll take number four. You did ask, when will we know about the teachers who chose distance learning and who chose, or who's will be teaching distance learning and who will be teaching in-person learning? And that's the complexity that we're discussing tonight because we are not able to effectively put all of our educators in place until we have a more full, a fuller picture of how many students will be in distance learning and how many parents have chose in-person learning. So it's difficult to say that we can have that information out to you in the next two weeks or three weeks. But once we get a full picture of how many parents have chosen distance learning and how many parents have chosen in-person learning, then what we can do is allow our schools to begin to put together their schedules so that we can get that information over to our parents in terms of who their child's teacher might be. And that might take a little bit of time. So that's not any time in the coming weeks or in the coming two weeks or so, but we need the information from the parents, which is due on the 20th. Then we can begin to get the other information in place. So I apologize if I don't have a definite answer for you tonight, but it will be our intent to get that information about the teacher out as quickly as possible. We just need the information for the student choice or parent choice first before we can proceed in that direction.
Hey, this is Dennis Warman from CAPS. I can answer the CAPS question. One of our issues and concerns is that mixing cohorts from after school. For example, if there's two second grade classes and they are in cohorts during the regular day or during the morning, then how do we mix them after school? We can't mix them after school right now. And so right now, we're going to remain staying on virtual learning or, I'm sorry, distance learning while we're in blended learning. And when we do full return, when deemed safe by our school board, then we'll return back to CAPS as normal. There is conversations about what to do about childcare and we're working on that.
Okay, I appreciate your honesty. So that would be something that I would definitely push back to, especially the board members that are listening today, especially for working parents, that will be eventually a problem. And that does make my decision a little bit more clear, especially with the answer you just gave me on CAPS. Thank you for your time.
This is Alexandra, if you would like to as well. My name is Dennis Warman and my email address, I'll put it in the chat as well. You can always email me and we can give you some more details and updates.
I appreciate that, but I know the board's going to be voting on some stuff here pretty soon. So I highly think that that, especially for working parents, not saying that everyone's not equal in this, but especially for working parents, we're going to have to adjust our schedules. Knowing that CAPS will still be online, that is, that is, that is a determining factor, especially for me and my household. But thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Sevales, Myra Sevales?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I apologize. I joined a little bit late. I was having issues logging in. But I want to say thank you, you know, good evening, first of all, and thank you, SBC USD for all of your hard work and dedication. I just have some follow-up questions and/or clarifications that I wasn't too sure on. So if I decide to do blending, blended learning versus full distance learning, will my child be receiving the same amount of minutes in synchronous instruction? And if so, how? Because currently, every child gets a certain amount of synchronous minutes and asynchronous minutes. And right now, everybody is, is doing distance learning. But it sounds like when they come back, it's only going to be two days or so. That will be synchronous learning. For the other three remaining days, will they also meet with the teacher the way they are now, virtually, or will they be completely off and then just be expected to do like some homework or something like that, which would be considered asynchronous learning, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. So I guess that's kind of like my question, you know? Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you for your question, Sevales. And when they are not in in-person learning, they will still get the combination that they've been getting in distance learning with life, with synchronous teaching and asynchronous teaching. It doesn't automatically just push them solely to asynchronous teaching. So on the other day, their teachers will continue to teach both synchronously and asynchronously for the time that they're not in, present in live instruction. So distance learning will continue with both.
Okay, and then, and then just to follow up with that, will those teachers remain the same then for that? So let's say my student does blended, will the teachers that he gets in the classroom will be the same that he gets the days that he's not in the classroom? Or is that what you're saying, that you can't guarantee?
For that, I'm, go ahead, Dr. Funches.
Your child will have the same teacher. That's, that's, that's what we're working towards.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Aguila Prado?
Si bueno, me escuchan?
Si.
Hello, do you hear me?
Buenas, buenas noches y gracias por la información.
Good evening and thank you for the information.
A mí me llegó un cuestionario sobre las, sobre las clases de, de ir a la escuela o quedarse en casa, sí?
I received.
Pero la preocupación o mi pregunta es, ah, eh, la tendencia pues de la pandemia no está controlada al cien por ciento.
So I have received.
Y es un riesgo, es un riesgo de que estén invitando de ir a la escuela.
Okay.
Sí, este, ahorita, ah, las estadísticas dicen, que viene, lo, lo peor por el cambio de clima, sí? Y va a haber un, va a haber un, como dijera, una confusión con la gripe, el flu y el COV. Entonces eso se puede disparar, entonces para mí, en mi punto de vista, este.
Señor Prado?
Mi, mi pregunta es, hubiera en que si están tomándose clases a distancia, que se mantuvieran las clases a distancia, sí? Aunque hay un, aunque hay un flujo de estrés, de, de cambio, pero hay más control. Sí, no sé, este, qué podría, están en un, están ahorita como en un, en un este, en un paso como, como clase piloto, algo así, pero va a haber muchos cambios. No sé quién me contestaría la pregunta. O cada escuela va a tener su.
Señor Prado, nos escucha? Nos puede dar un momento para que puedan traducir la pregunta?
Go ahead.
Yo recibí un cuestionario, excuse me, I have received a questionnaire about, about making a choice of my, you know, my child should be distance learning or in, you know, in-person learning. And I have a concern about, you know, about COVID, that it's not under control yet. And people can get sick if it's just not from COVID, the flu or something like that. Would it be just better to keep things as they are in distant, distance learning?
I can respond to that.
You can respond there, I thought.
Thank you for the translation. So, so we as a district have to have options for our families. And so because we are so large, we have to start preparing as if we can open up. At this very moment, we cannot, but we, it will take a lot of time to open up. So we are in preparation phases only. Go ahead and translate that.
Okay, so como un distrito pues somos un distrito grande y tenemos que hacer preparaciones y ofrecer opciones a las familias. Pero en este momento solamente estamos en la fase de hacer preparaciones. En este momento no podemos abrir por la situación como está, pero tenemos que prepararnos para que cuando sea prudente en que los niños pueden regresar a clases.
So, so some of the parents were saying the same thing in the chat that you were sharing, why are we, we should just stay in distance learning? And, and again, as a district, we have to have options. This is what the state requires of us if our numbers drop low enough. So right now, in order for us to prepare for those options, we do need those, the, your decisions for your personal, for your children, and then we can prepare. That doesn't mean we're moving into a physical in-person yet. And if you're not comfortable as a parent sending your child back, then we want to encourage you to follow what you feel comfortable with, which would mean to have your child stay in distance learning, and that would be okay.
Pues como un distrito tenemos que ofrecer opciones a las familias. Es un requisito del estado. Pues otros expresaron la misma inquietud en el chat. Y pues si usted no se siente seguro en mandar a sus hijos a la escuela, pues animamos que así tome la decisión. Pero como un distrito siguiendo los requisitos del estado, pues tenemos que ofrecer opciones cuando sea prudente para que los niños regresan.
And Mark, the only thing I saw a parent respond, Nancy, I think is the name. And so thank you, Nancy, for your comment. She says she understands what we're sharing, but that she doesn't feel like we should expect them to have a definite position without more information. It shouldn't be binding. And it's not binding, it helps us to plan. And then if you want to make a change, then we'll have a process by which you can make a change. So we are giving, I guess, a option two for you, but we need something to at least get the ball rolling, I guess, for us on our end. Thank you.
We don't have any more hands raised, if you want to undo your camera and if you have any more questions, then raise your hand that way or place your question in the chat. But as of right now, I don't have any more hands raised.
And, and please, we may have missed some of the questions in the chat. We, so please, please either repost it or ask it verbally. We don't want anybody leaving that didn't get your question answered and that we missed it accidentally.
Cynthia, I, I see you raising your hand and you can go ahead and ask the question. Thank you.
Cynthia Nicolaisen, Principal from Parkside. I have a parent slash employee on the line. She wasn't able to get in time to submit her comments. The form's not accepting, so she asked me to ask you. So that's what I'm doing. Her question is, I have it there in the chat. My question is, how do I, as an employee, can I make a decision for my son's instructional choice when I don't know myself what I will be doing? Is there going to be considerations for teachers or other employees with students in the district? Student and special programs, what priority will they have in staying in the one they're in? How would that work? And then she explained why she couldn't get in. So I don't know who wants to answer that.
Thank you, Cynthia. I was, I was working on putting something together in the chat and I figured that was for an employee.
Yeah.
Not you. So I'll answer that first part of the question this way. Number one, we understand what that decision may entail for the educator that has a student in the district and just weighing where he or she may land in terms of distance and/or in-person teaching. But I will say this, in terms of having a teaching position, we do know that our educators will be coming back or teaching in some form or fashion. But on the other side, with the, the student, having a student in the district, we do have a work group working right now on any options or any available options that might be available to our employees in terms of what do we do with our scholars before school, after school, and such. But that information is work in progress or the work or the committee is working on that and that's in progress right now. So we do not have an update on that just yet. But in terms of the, the teaching position, that particular educator does have a voice with the union and will be working through the negotiations process where those voices will be heard as well. So I would just recommend that voice those concerns or voice that information or voice those desires and recommendations to the union as we work with the union on our possible next steps for returning teachers. And that's a way to get your voice heard as well. So we understand that. And we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we provide the best options for our employees, especially when related to coming back and you have students in the district. But it's always, it's a work in progress right now.
Do I see the new hand raised? Ms. Phillips, you can go ahead and ask your question. Am I requested to unmute you?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'm asking this question on behalf of the teachers at King Middle School. We are concerned about what's going to be put in place for scholars who refuse to maintain the six feet of distance and are constantly removing their masks. Will whatever interventions or consequences that are in place, will those be site-based? Or does the district have a blanket plan for how to address that? We're concerned about our safety as staff coming back to campus with non-compliant students.
I'll answer that question. We would expect that any student who comes back to a blended learning model understands the expectation of having to follow the guidelines to remain in, coming to school. And those guidelines are that they're going to be wearing a face covering at all times while they're on a school campus. Our Positive Youth Development Department, as well as the Swiss Department, will create a matrix that will be provided to all teachers that will outline the procedures that would be involved when we have a student that falls outside of expectations. We take it very seriously in the sense that, you know, COVID and making sure that we're adhering to all preventative measures is, safety is number one. And so we hope that our parents will partner with us in that process. We're not trying to exclude students, but we do have to maintain a safe environment for all the scholars and the educators that are with them. So to answer your question, do we have, what's the expectation for the teacher as far as consequences for students that yet, has not yet been developed? But whatever we do develop will be done in concert with our teachers' union as well as other stakeholder groups.
I could go back to, I believe Cynthia Nicolaisen, there was a second part of that question. And it had to do with special education. I know Dr. Lundie is in the chat answering. So we'll just wait for that one, okay? Didn't want to skip that, but that would be appropriate for Special Ed to provide a little bit of insight on that question.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and continue with Kathleen Valdez. You can go ahead and unmute and ask your question, please.
Hi, so I have two questions. The first is like a second part to the question I asked earlier. The first is like a second part to the question I asked earlier about busing. So I know you had said that students will not be screened before riding the bus, but that you guys are going to try to not have them mingle as best as possible. Now, if a student attends a magnet school, for example, and they have to do the transfer sites where they, where they switch from one bus to another bus, are those transfer sites going to continue or is the busing going to be different? Because when they switch it, I mean, usually when they go to the busing, you have students from various different schools going on that bus and then they have another bus where they switch, where they go to, to their school site. And at that point, all those students are, for example, going to one school. So are those, how is a busing system going to change? And then the second part of my question is, if a student has an IEP and they have, they receive certain services in their IEP. Right now, currently, we're receiving those services via Google, the Google meeting. But if our student does blended or distance learning still, how will they receive those services and how will those services change? Will they have to go to school to receive it or can they continue to receive it at home? Will they get a new speech or, or my student has speech? Will they receive a new teacher or therapist? Or how does that work? Thank you.
So I, this is Marie Asma, as a Director of Transportation, and I will answer the transportation question. For our students who attend a different school other than their home school, we will still have a transfer system. Because we have so many students that go from school and attend a different school, we must still transport in that fashion. However, all, unlike the past where some students stayed on the bus and others transferred under our COVID norms, all students would exit the bus at the transfer. Some would move on to their second bus. Those that would have to stay on their bus would exit and keep distancing outside of the bus so that we can remove signage from the seats that were not utilized. So the next group of kids boarding after the transfer will sit in a completely different set of seats. And similar to when they first boarded, again, they will all be issued hand sanitizer and they will load from the rear of the bus to the front to make sure we're following physical distancing even as they board or exit. I hope that answered your question.
And then Kathleen, I will try to speak to the Special Ed. I know Dr. Lundie is on this meeting as well, but I think she's responding to chat. So she may have not heard your complete question. So if I miss any of it, or Dr. Lundie, I may ask you to come, come in and help me out. Please be ready. So you had asked if the, if you keep your child, I'm going to rephrase your question first. If you keep your child in distance learning, will they continue to receive their, their services? And is it possible that your speech therapist, your speech teacher might get changed? Did I get those two parts of your question correct? She needs to be allowed to be unmuted again, so she can answer me.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, great. So if you stay in distance, well, first of all, any of our students that have IEPs, it is our responsibility to provide those services. So whether a family stays in distance learning or a family goes into blended learning, we are responsible to continue to provide those services. So you will continue to have that service. And, and if you choose to go into blended learning, you would still get, continue to have that service. Now, in terms of how the service will be offered or by whom it will be offered, there is a possibility, we're going to really try not to make changes, especially for these specialized programs, because we know how specialized it is. But I don't want to, I don't want to tell you that for certain it won't, especially if the speech therapist that you have, for some reason, maybe their own medical situation or something in their life, they can't come and do physical. They could do the distance and if you would be okay with that, then that can happen. So it is our goal to minimize the number of changes, especially when it comes to our special needs children. And so that will be the goal. If we have to do it, it is, it's going to be only because we can't keep the same teacher. But that is, that is the goal. And, and as long as a family is okay, especially when it comes to speech, if you choose to stay in distance learning and as long as that family is okay receiving the services in distance learning, then we don't see why that wouldn't be able to be, be an option. So that will be the goal. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So also, if I can just, just add, and so I also answered in the, in the chat as well. So the, the platform that we purchased for our speech therapist is HIPAA compliant. So, and we purchased it for the entire year. So as much as possible, we want to limit as much of the, the inner, the on-campus activities as much as possible. So where appropriate, a lot of our students could continue to have their distance learning, even if they're on campus, because we also don't want to pull them from their classes. That's already limited to give them those speech services. So we are going to be looking at our students on an individual basis to see where is it appropriate to have in-person or not in-person. However, the, the, the other pieces, so there are some services, like you need to see the student's mouth move. There's other things that require very specific in-person kind of activities. And so with those, those are the ones we're going to be looking at. But overall, a lot of the services we found is, is working actually on this digital platform that we, we did purchase for the entire school year.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and go with Alexa G. Alexa G, you can go ahead and unmute and ask your question.
Hi. I have a senior in high school and I was looking at the schedule and I don't know if that's just pertaining to elementary, but sometimes she goes in and starts class at 9:30, sometimes she starts at 11:30. The times that she ends are not always consistent, so her school schedule is sporadic throughout the day. We signed up, she wanted to do, you know, half in and half out. What I want to know, is those schedule times still going to be the same? Or are they going to be switched up? Or how are they doing with high schoolers? And also, like I said, she's a senior, so trying to keep some kind of normalcy but still keeping the kids safe. So is the schedule going to be the same on the computer at home as it is once she does go back part-time?
Dr. Vikkattessa, I know that you've been working with the team to do that, if you wanted to take that, that question?
Yes, thank you very much for that question. You're, you're absolutely correct. The schedule that we have put here is just to make sure that we give you a broad idea of how many, how many days the students could come into school and it is not going to be a full day, just to give you an idea. And it will be different for high school, middle schools and elementary. As Dr. Monara said, when we know, when we have the idea of how many students are coming in, we have to make sure that, what does it look like in a high school setting? And having said that, we're also looking at the instructional minutes and what is going to be. And you said your son is a senior. Our biggest focus point is here is how many instructional minutes and live instructional minutes your students is getting in the combination when we do a blended learning? We have to take so many things into consideration. So once we know the number of students, then the high school principal group will come together to work out a schedule that will make sure that the instructional minutes in any way is not shortchanged for your students.
Okay. Also too, she does, I have a daughter, she does sports. And I know you guys were talking about conditioning, we'll be starting soon. Are the coaches going to reach out to us or are we reaching out to the coaches? And how will that be done? Will it be done at home? Are they going to do a Zoom conditioning or are they going back into the training facility, working with weights and all that?
So great question. I'll, I'll help answer that. So the conditioning for phase one, the plan is to do it on campus. Now, they will not be in any buildings. They'll be outside in small cohorts of no more than 10. We want to get them back together, seeing each other, conditioning. So that's the plan. And we're working with all the high schools this week as we speak to get all the procedures in order. And so I would encourage you to reach out to your student's school or their coach and find out, they are working right now to make sure that the physicals get done for all the student athletes. So that's what phase one conditioning is going to look like. Those, we're trying to get them back, back at the school, distanced amongst their peers a little bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Livy Servin, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can ask your question. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I have a few questions. I know, I don't know if someone got answered because I got disconnected previously. My first one is in regards to a student being sent home. Let's say he's sitting at home with a cough. For example, my student has asthma and also has severe allergies. If he's sent home with a cough and I take him to the doctor and they tell me, okay, it's just his allergies, are you guys going to require me to give, come back with a negative COVID testing every time he's sent home with a cough? Because I mean, a cough, it's a regular in this, in this coming season. How does that work? Number two, I personally have insurance and I'm blessed for that. But what about parents that do not have insurance or don't have the means to have their children tested or taken to the doctor? Will you guys help them with resources to get this done? My second question, it's in regards to, what, is there a difference in instructional minutes on blended learning versus distance learning? And the last one, oh, sorry, one more. The teachers that will be doing the distance learning, let's say, let's say I stay with distance learning. It's my, I understand. But will they be still from the same location, from the same, from the same school? Or is he going to get a teacher from a different school or just within the district? And that's it.
Hi, this is Colleen Williams, Director of Student Wellness and Health Services. So I'd like to answer the first two questions and then hopefully someone else can step into your third question. So the first question about asthma and a cough. And we put that in the chat previously as well, but I know you said that you got disconnected. So definitely know that any documentation that we have of students' pre-existing conditions or ongoing conditions such as asthma, we would note that in their file and know that that type of cough is coming from either allergies or the asthma case as well. And students that have those pre-existing conditions would not necessarily be sent home every single time. So we would look for other symptoms from children who had those types of existing conditions. Hopefully that answers the first question. And then the second question about COVID testing and, and whether or not students have medical coverages or families have medical coverage. So we have a partnership with our County Department of Public Health that is offering free COVID testing for all community members, not just San Bernardino City families. And so that partnership is currently ongoing. And so we would provide those resources and locations. And there are some other partnership opportunities with some of our other medical service partners that we're looking into now. And so as we come back to the physical setting, we'd be able to provide multiple resources to our families and to ensure that if they wanted their child to get tested, that they definitely could, could do so. Okay? So thank you.
I'll, I'll take the teacher question. I believe you wanted to know if you chose in-person learning and, or your child attends school. And I'm just assuming elementary, it could be middle, but I was assuming elementary age child. But it is the district's intent and it's our, where we are right now to keep your child in their home school. And that's what we aim to do. So I hope that answers your question for right now. The homeschool is the place that we like to keep your child at.
It was in regards also to, is he going to get a teacher from his school? Or is he going to be a district teacher?
So as we go through the, as we go through the process to determine the in-person, our teachers that will be in person and the teachers that will serve in distance learning, of course, we look first at the, at the school site. We'd love to keep the, the students with the current teachers or keep the teachers at the current school site. So we start there. If that's not possible, then we have to look at the other options.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I forgot one last question. Some of all this stuff about traffic flow of the kids inside the school. But do you guys have any measures in place for pickup and drop-off that requires the parents? And I mean, just regular drop-off on regular days, it was a mess. Parents don't listen. How do you guys plan to regulate this or control this or how is this going to work?
So I'll take that one. So first, we're all having to remember that the, the number of kids on campus at any given time are, are going to be cut in half during this. So half of the traffic that we've all experienced as parents and, and staff members will be gone right, right off the bat there. We're also looking at staggered arrival and dismissal. So we know we can't just hit the, you know, the, the bell and, and all the doors open and the kids come out because then all of the, the physical distancing measures that we had in place in the cohorts and the small groups are gone. We just intermingled everybody by our own doing. And so we'll have to control the release. It'll likely be very staggered where a teacher brings a group of kids out and gets them into cars or gets them on their way and then the next group comes out. So, you know, it'll look a lot different than what we're used to seeing. Great question though.
Thank you.
I believe you also had a question in regards to the instructional minutes in blended versus virtual. Is that correct as well? So I'll, I'll address it because I did hear it. So I'm, Tasha Dweizner, I'm Director for Elementary Instruction. And whether you choose virtual or blended learning, your instructional minutes are the same. So the, what's required by state guidelines is what will be provided to our students. We want to make sure that they receive the standards according to what state guidelines are.
Thank you. I have Lisa Leppe. You can go ahead and ask your question. You're unmuted, Lisa. Lisa Leppe, can you hear me? One more time for Lisa. Okay, she just put in the chat that she is having technical difficulties. Lisa, if you'd like to type your question in the chat, I can read it for you.
Even the social distance concerned.
Lisa, if you'd like to type your question in the chat, I can go ahead and read it out loud for you. All right, she was the last person with their hand raised. As of right now, I don't have any more hand raised. I'm going to give her one more chance. She logged out and logged back in. Lisa, you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. I apologize.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for all this good information that you guys are giving out to us tonight. My question is, I have a freshman and a senior at Cohone High School. If they, we chose to do 100% online, but they also play softball and baseball. Will they be able to participate in their sport?
Yes, they would still be able to participate in their sport.
Yes, they would still be able to participate in their sport.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We also have Julian Salley, I believe. I'm going to go ahead and request to unmute.
Okay, I have a question. My son is in an advanced placement first grade. So there's only one of those classes at his school. So if his teacher decides to go back in person and we decide to keep distance learning, does that mean, I, I mean, I know that means he'll get a different teacher from a different school, but will he lose his place like when it comes to second grade in the same program? Can I keep him at the same school or how will that happen?
I can, I can respond to that. So he would not lose his place. He would still maintain and be in the program that he is in currently. Did I answer that for you?
Julian? Did we answer your question?
Sorry, I muted myself when I was done with the question and then it wouldn't let me unmute myself. So, okay, so I am keeping him at home for the rest of this school year. And so I know odds are he will get a teacher and odds are the teacher will be from a different school. So I just want to make sure that when everybody returns and my son does return probably next academic year, he will still be at that school, even though it's not our homeschool. And he'll still be in that program. I know they test for GATE going into second grade. Will that be done online also then?
Um, right now, we're working on testing for GATE. So right now, we don't have a schedule this year. It will depend upon our ability to return. So we're working that out and to be able to administer that remotely. So we're still getting that figured out. But your, your child will not lose the ability to be GATE tested. They will not lose their position or program due to what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I seen in the chat LG Stilo 5X had a question. I'm going to go ahead and request to unmute you. Si claro.
La pregunta que quería hacer yo es que, es que cuánto tiempo va, va a durar esta, las clases de, en, eh, o como están ahorita los niños? A cuando y cuando entren a la escuela en tiempo combinado.
I believe the question was, uh, is it, are they going to be receiving the same amount of instructional time when the children are returning to, uh, co, uh, accommodation, uh, of being at school and distance learning?
Yes, instructional time is the same, whether choosing whichever option you choose. We are obligated to make sure that we provide the right, the required number of instructional minutes. So that will be the case in either choice.
Yeah.
And I think-
I believe she was also asking how long the distance learning option would be available once blended learning happened. And both options will be available, distance learning as well throughout the year if parents choose that. And then blended learning, as soon as that starts, will be available until, until further notice or things change. Entonces las dos opciones del anísaje a la distancia y el del combinado van a ser opciones hasta el fin del año o solo que cambien las cosas donde podamos regresar.
Otra pregunta. Yo ya hablé a la escuela de mi niño para decidir y decidí que, que yo quiero que vaya a la escuela.
Yeah, I've called my child's-
Si, yo quiero cambiar esa, esa, eh, si yo quiero cambiar de opinión, puedo hacerlo o ya no?
Okay, I called my child's school to let them know that my option is, that if I want to change my option, can I, will I be able to do that?
So you can change your option up until November 20th without any issue. You can go call your school, you can go into the Ares Portal and you can make any changes that you'd like up until November 20th. After November 20th, the process will change. And it will, it will look like a process where you have to fill out a form. There may be a committee, you might be asked why you want to have the change. There will be a process to do that because we are basing our teacher allotments and programming based on our November 20th number of students. So yes, you can change, but there will be a process after 11:20.
So after the-
Está bien, eso era todo, gracias.
Gracias, señora.
Cambio cuando quiera, pero después el 20 de noviembre va a haber un procedimiento que va a tener que llenar una solicitud, va a haber un comité que va a estar revisando la solicitud. Esta vez le va a preguntar si, no, por qué quiere hacer el cambio.
Go ahead, Selena.
And we don't have any more hands raised unless you see anybody in the, without their camera on with their hand raised. Looks like we've answered all of them. I'll give you another moment to raise your hand. Keisha McGee?
Um, mine is more of a, a comment. I've been posting in the chat, but it really disturbed me when you guys talked about punishing these kids for not wearing a mask. I, the, just the other day, my son, hurt his foot and was in the ER and I had to tell him 20 times to put on a mask. It's not realistic to think that these kids are just going to pull on a mask. They're going to tug at their mask, they're going to tear it off. My son has allergies, so he tugs, he was tugging at the mask. I can't breathe the whole entire time. You guys are going to be creating a problem if you guys start punishing these kids for wearing a mask. That's the same thing as what happened when y'all started suspending all these kids for all of this nonsense. And, and, and parents pushed to do the positive interventions and, and, and doing the PSPBIS. I mean, that, that's just not realistic. U.S. School Board, board, y'all need to really think about that consequence. There's, uh, I'm sure there's other things you guys can do. I know everyone's trying to protect everyone on their safety. And again, my thought, if the teachers are wearing masks and, and they're already protecting themselves. So for the staff to say, and of course, everybody is concerned. I'm concerned. That's why I'm choosing to keep my sons home from, from school and not having them return to school because of these issues. And I want my son, at the, at the end of the day, his safety and his education is more important. So if I have to stop working to stay at home, then that's what I'm going to do. But I just think it's outrageous for you guys to put any, any punishment tied to these kids, especially the small ones of wearing a mask. You guys have to find other alternatives.
Hi, this is Marlene Bykendova. I'm the Director of Positive Youth Development. So I would love to answer that for Ms. McGee, McKee, I think. McGee, yes. Thank you for, for saying that. Yes, we, we do not want to suspend a bunch of kids and send them all home. I mean, we know that suspension doesn't work. So for any kind of behavior issues like that, we always go, where we were required to go through a list of interventions before we ever get to a punishment. So we will do everything in our power to use our relationship, to retrain kids, whatever it is they need to be able to comply, and especially for the little ones. They, they need grace more than they, they need fire. So we have quite a bit of interventions we can do before we head toward punishment. And every case, it has to be a case by case basis. So if you're familiar with AB 1729, that was a law passed in 2012 that says that we have to try other means of correction before we head toward punishment. So yes, I understand this is a safety issue for some people, especially for teachers. But it's definitely not going to be about us just suspending, especially little kids, for, you know, tugging at their mask for moving it or whatnot. So we will use all of our restorative practices that we know, other interventions that we will use to try to remediate before we go there, if at all possible. So thank you for that concern. We agree. We're not about punishing and pushing kids out. We agree with that.
I seen Lauren's iPhone with their hand raised. I'm not sure if she still had a question.
You there? I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, I did have a question. It was brought up early on during this meeting where another parent stated that in another location, her, someone from her family was, they're doing the distant learning plus having in-class instructions. There's kids that are in the classroom with their tablets, their Chromebooks, and the kids are at home are still getting the same learning during that same class time. Why is that not an option for us? I'm just a little disturbed and concerned with the fact that no matter what choice I make, my kids are going to have issues because A, they're going to have to get a new teacher. And that's something, we're already in the middle of the school year. Nobody wants their kids to be uprooted and have to change what they've already been doing with one teacher to have to go to a next teacher, which means that we have to meet with this new teacher to figure out what the game plan is going to be, how this new teacher's lessons are going to be set and everything that's going to have to go on. So why is that not an option where the kids can, some of them can be in the classroom for those parents that are choosing to allow their kids to go to class for those two days out of the week? And the kids are at home, same teacher, getting the same lessons at the same time. Why is that not an option? Does that not make sense or what's the issue with that as an option?
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in on that one. And, and good question. Because we have explored that and we've researched that as well, some of the resources and technology associated with that. We've talked to other districts about that. We've even reached out to teachers and our union. One of the issues that we run into is the, uh, the, the challenge of teaching in person and then trying to keep the scholars on the other side of that technology engaged and, and intervening in any behavior modifications or behavior supports needed. And then the equity piece around how much work that it takes to do that. So as we looked into that and considered that model, that model has been very complex and may not be as easily implemented as, as we would think so. Even though we've considered that and we've done our homework around that, we have not landed on that just yet, but it's been a consideration. Your, your point is well taken. And, and we thank you for it, but that's some of the explanation behind why we haven't gone down that road. I don't know if you want to weigh in there, anyone from Cavan or Dr. Menares at all on that. That's-
Uh, yes. Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. So, um, in addition to what Dr. Funches said, when we started investigating it and we spent some time, we had our Director of IT investigate some potential options as well as our Director of Assessment and Educational Technology. Having the, um, the devices and the necessary infrastructure, and I'm not going to say exactly what it, I'm not going to use the right language to, to describe what is needed. But to have what we need in order to do that effectively, we wouldn't, the, the, the vendors couldn't get us that, that, those devices for a district our size in enough insufficient time. So that's another reason why we didn't, we are not going down that route at this time. When we, we could, we could push on getting the devices, but then when we talk to the districts that are doing it, it is not serving the, the students well, which is our ultimate goal, right? It, the teacher is really trying to manage two different classroom settings and neither one of those groups of students are getting the kind of instruction that they deserve. So initially, we thought, oh, this could be the, the answer. We really were very excited about it. And then when we looked to see how it's playing out in other districts, it's, it is a different story. So there's a few different reasons why, one of them being having the devices or everything that's needed because it's more than a computer for the student and the teacher. There's, um, there's just more to it than that. And then making sure that it indeed provides the best, you know, better instruction than what we can do now. And what we're finding in talking with other districts is that is not the case. Thank you for your question though, Lauren.
Thank you.
It is 8:30. Unless we have any other questions, we are going to end our virtual town hall for tonight. I know Dr. Volkmer would like to, um, to have the closing words. Please know that we will be posting frequently asked questions from the chat and other pieces of information that we've collected. We thank you for your time and helping us to get better. We know it's very challenging. So with that, Selena, is there another question?
Well, Dr. Menares, we're all good to close.
Thank you. So with that, Dr. Volkmer, the, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Menares. Everybody, I did want to acknowledge one more board member that has been here the entire evening. Didn't see her on the, there's a huge Brady Bunch screen in front of me. And so Dr. Barbara Flores has also been at the meeting. Thank you, Dr. Flores, for being here. Appreciate it, along with Dr. Scott Wyatt and President Gwen Rogers. We always appreciate and always have the support of our Board of Education. They have been just stalwart throughout this entire process. So I also want to thank Selena and Esmeralda for the terrific job they did in facilitating and moderating, keeping up with the chat and the hands, the hand, I didn't even know where you were getting all these hands on the pictures and everything. So want to give them a round, if you'd give them a round of applause. And for all of you who have been involved in the meeting this evening, I just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. We, we gain a lot of insight from your questions and sometimes we don't have all the answers and we wish we did. As you can, as you can see, this is an extremely complex endeavor with lots and lots of moving parts. I mean, we'd like to think, you know, we have about 50,000 kids. There's probably about 50,000 moving parts to this whole thing. But I want you to, to rest assured that our, our team is working on this day in and day out constantly to make it as good as we possibly can for kids. We wish we could accommodate every person's individual need to the, you know, to the, to, to exactly how they would want it. And, and that's probably not completely possible, given all the variables that are, that are part of this equation. Just a, just a cup, one thing, one person asked, and I apologize, I don't remember who it is, about, you know, will my, will my first grader still be in the program in second grade? We know we're going to have to do a lot of shuffling. There's, there's no way around that. We wish we didn't have to, but we are going to have to do some shuffling. At the end of this, when we all get to go back to school as we knew it last February, where kids came every day and they had, were in person with their teachers, we're going to, we're going to reshuffle that all back. So this is not going to be a disadvantage or a detriment to any student over the long haul. If they've qualified for a program, they're going to get to remain in that program. Well, you have our, you have our guarantee on that. We're going to, we're going to keep working hard. We're going to keep giving our Board of Education as much information and the best information that we have and that we can get. get. And we'll look for their guidance and direction. And ultimately, it's about keeping everybody safe. We, we take education very seriously. We want the absolute best for your kids. We want every student in the district to graduate college and career-ready. But we know at this moment, we're in a very unique situation where, where safety, you know, kind of, kind of comes out on top. And we want to make sure that, you know, not just the students are staying safe, but the, they're taking, you know, if they get COVID, they're taking it home to their families. So we want to keep their family safe. And we want to keep our team members safe. And we want to keep their families safe. And so again, I want to thank you for all of your comments. I've been doing my best to keep up with the chat and all of your questions. Again, they're very, very insightful for us, very helpful for us. We appreciate your time this evening. I am absolutely sure this will not be the last town hall meeting we'll be having when it comes to Phase Two and Phase Three of our progression of instructional models. Want to thank our team, the rest of our team, Dr. Menares, Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Funches, Eric Batier, all, everybody who's been, Mrs. Applegate, everybody who's been involved in preparing for this, the, the hours and hours of preparation and, and work and reading and studying the guidance. I just want to say thank you to all of them as well. And I think, Dr. Menares, that's gonna do it for the evening. Is that correct?
That's a wrap.
Great.
Everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Great job. Thank you, guys.